5th, 2020. We're originating from the administration building and public access to be provided via Zoom. I hereby call the meeting to order and would ask that you care to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We are providing public access via Zoom because meeting in person is impossible and impractical per se, Section 21.81, specifically because of continuing COVID-19 pandemic and social distancing requirements. I would entertain a motion for the adoption of today's agenda.
Still moved, second.
Okay, Edens?
Aye.
Aye.
Merkin, aye. The agenda is adopted. Next, we have updates on COVID-19. Are there any updates from staff that we need to hear right now? Hearing, seeing none from staff, any updates from the supervisors?
The only thing I have is just looking at the numbers. It looks like statewide, there was 485 new positives. So we're at 56,591, eight additional deaths, so we're at 1,048. Story County appears to have 36 new positives, so we're at 1608, no additional deaths and one hospitalized.
I did hear on KSI this morning, as I was driving over, I thought that it appears that Iowa State's testing rate of the 900 and some additional students that were tested the first week of classes, it was 135 or something like that who tested positive. So that last week's testing rate for them was 13%. Yeah, I haven't had time to find it because I got that home from the school, but you need to find that.
Last I heard, they were still at 2.2%. They had tested 8,075.
I think overall, I think it was just that segment. I saw the article as well, I don't know if I found it, it's two. I think it was the segment.
Yeah, but that is 13, not overall.
I didn't look at all.
No, it's not overall.
Overall, it's like 2.82%.
Right, it's for the first week of classes that students who were tested that first week of classes. So not the ones who moved in the door, not the 8,000, no. So it's that week that was at 13%, not overall. When you add in all of the students, okay, then you bring it down. But I just wanted to make note that that was one week, the first week of classes. Those who were tested by ISU, I suppose they came in or tested for contact or something else. Any other updates? Okay, then if not, I'll open public comment number one. This comment period is for the public to address topics on today's agenda. Are there any members of the public who are on the call who would like to make any comments about today's agenda? Edens?
I need to press star nine.
And I need to either raise your hand or press star nine if you're on the phone.
I don't know who the guest is. That name is conservation.
Okay, seeing none, I will close the public comment session and we'll go to discussion and consideration of items brought before the board with a request for immediate action. Are there any? Hearing none, we have no agency reports and was informed by the auditor this morning that they were not able to get the minutes dense. We do not have minutes today. It's a busy week. Next, consideration of personnel actions. There is one change. The first new hire in the attorney's office, the date should be changed from August 27th to September 8th of 2020. So I would entertain a motion to approve the personnel actions listed with that one change.
Still moved, second.
Olson?
Aye.
Edens?
Aye.
Merkin, aye. Personnel actions are approved. Next is the consent agenda and I would entertain a motion for approval of the consent agenda if there's nothing to be called.
Still moved, second.
Edens?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Merkin, aye. Consent is approved. Next, we have a public hearing, consideration of Resolution 21.14 FY21 budget. Lisa Markley, good morning.
Good morning, Tom.
Resolution 2114 is an amendment for the FY21 budget. It was published in all three papers on August 13th of 2020. Of the 5.7 million that is being amended into this budget, 5.4 million is carryover from FY20 MSP funds. Overall, the expenses are increasing by a little over 11% and the revenues are only increasing by 0.8%. And those are all grants that are carried forward. It is too early, I think, in the FY to amend a lot of revenues at this point in time. We don't have a lot of revenue projections to be able to amend in yet. So the fund balance information after this amendment is included in your information. The general slash supplemental is going to reestimate it at 25.3%. We budgeted originally for that to be at 26%, so it's close. Are there any questions on any of the amendments being requested?
I think I just have one question. So did you say the carryover, is that the 5,429,67? Is that, is that, I assume I can determine.
Yeah, a little over 5.4 is carryover.
Yes, thank you.
Carryforward funds, not carryover.
Right.
Carryforward funds.
No, and I just would like to note then with the recalculation, that gives us the, if you will, the, what, there's not a good term for surplus or whatever, that ending fund balance, what's left over the ending fund balance?
Over the goal of 25% ending fund balance.
Over the goal of 25%, thank you, that's a good way to put it. It has gone to 389,132 and it was at 446,000 when we looked at our numbers before. So we're down here 50, 60, about 60,000, correct?
Correct.
Of that running total. Okay. Any other questions? If not, I will open the public hearing. Is there anybody in the public, anybody who wants to make comments? And if so, again, raise your hand or unmute yourself, but press a star nine. Seeing nobody, I will close the public hearing and entertain a motion for approval of Resolution 21.14.
Still moved, second.
Any further discussion? If not, Edens?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Merkin, aye. It's approved.
Thank you.
Now, Resolution 21.15.
You have to be better than that, he's like next.
I thought I had to wait.
Stop moving around.
I thought I had to wait, sorry. As you know, in order to actually make that budget amendment effective, we have to appropriate, you have to appropriate those dollars to the departments. I want to make a couple notes. A few of the departments are being appropriated for more than the budget amendment and there's a reason behind that. The auditor is, I'm adding an amount for the general election because those classes are going to be starting here real shortly, in fact, they already are. So I'm adding some more dollars to her appropriation, not her budget, okay? The treasurer tax statement mailing went out, we only appropriated 50% of all these budgets, so that went out early, obviously. So there you go, they need the dollars. The recorders' records management fees, I'm going to go ahead and appropriate the rest of those dollars because those also got spent at the beginning of the fiscal year. IRVM for contract labor this fall, they have a lot of costs in the fall that 50% isn't quite enough for them sometimes. And the Justice Center for the HVAC. So the appropriation that you see in Brennewe incorporates some of those changes along with the actual budget amendment.
Okay, any questions? None. If not, then I would entertain a motion for approval of Resolution 21-15.
Still moved, second.
Olson?
Aye.
Edens?
Aye.
Merkin, aye. It is approved. Okay. Thank you. No, she's free to go, right? Oh, yeah. Oh, okay. Well, stick around, we might be, we might have a couple of questions for you on.
Oh, that's right.
So next, we have Sandra King for discussion and consideration of use of Story County's FY20-21 priorities for FY22 asset allocations. Good morning, Board.
Good morning.
Good morning, Sandra.
The item before you this morning is actually the county's funded priorities for the FY22 asset allocations and these were the priorities that were used last year. It was expected that we would have the results from the Community Needs Assessment that's completed by the Story County Quality of Life Alliance. However, the COVID impact has caused a delay in that process that I updated the board on last month. So that assessment has now been further delayed and is expected to be completed early 2021. And at that time, we expect that the COVID effect can be taken into consideration. So the county's current priorities focuses pretty heavily on basic needs such as affordable childcare, housing, transportation, food, et cetera, and remains relevant for today's realities. So I recommend that the board approve the county's priorities used in the FY21 asset allocations so that we can use that for FY22 asset allocations.
More questions or discussion?
I have none. I, this may be the fourth time I've voted for the same list and I still feel they are very applicable.
Yeah, I don't have any questions. I do too, particularly with the emergency situation that we've been in these last week, couple of weeks, that they certainly seem applicable, even without it moving forward they can.
Certainly understand, given that Les Weiss' role has been big in getting this done in previous years and instead of Story County Public Health, basically, she's pretty busy right now. So, yeah, I have no problems with these. I would entertain a motion, there's no further discussion.
I move approval for fiscal year 2021 priorities for the fiscal 22 asset allocations.
Aye, second.
Further discussion? Hearing none. Edens?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Merkin, aye. Adopted. Thank you. So next, we go to consideration of requests from Second District Court Administrator for Story County today for jury selection process. And I want to apologize to the board, there were two things that were supposed to be put on as attachments and I think the second one got missed, but I gave it to both of you and I have an additional copy for records. Basically, what's happened is that there are several large trials coming up, class A felonies or class Bs, their sexual assaults. They bring large jury pools in and at this point with the size of our courtrooms, if they had to bring these jury pools in, in smaller groups and run them sequentially, it might take a week or longer to seat a jury rather than a day or two. So I kind of got notified this later on when I got a call from the City of Ames, from Deb Shulworth in the city administrator's office, was notified that the courts were looking at this city auditorium. They were going to charge $106 an hour. I asked if that could be waived and I was told it couldn't because they, basically, because they didn't want to give up any potential Parks and Rec revenue because Parks and Rec isn't getting a lot of revenue. Then in the meantime, I heard that some people have looked at Gates Auditorium or Gates Hall here in Nevada. Their rental rate, we discovered, was $60 an hour. And I was also told that sometimes the city of Nevada waves what the county wants to use Gates Hall, so I contacted Jordan Cook, the city administrator. What you have is Scott Hand's letter as an attachment. And what I just gave you, I think you got one yesterday, it was, Jordan Cook and I texted, he, we talked and then I asked him to send an email and he said in speaking with Parks and Rec, they would like to waive the fees for the county during the times Gates Hall will be used, let me know if you need anything else. And that is a zero price tag opposed to 9,300 if we use the names auditorium. We will have some things to do. We will need to set up gates and tear it down to the seating. I've talked to Joby Brogdon, Facilities Management, he says they can handle that possibly with some assistance from the sheriff's office and with the, and from maybe the county attorney's office, however, they're going to be busy preparing for trials, so they can't do it alone. So I just brought this to the board's attention and would ask that we consider that we rent Gates Hall here in Nevada for jury selection proceedings for September through December.
And the dates listed on here from the list, those are the jury selection dates?
Those are the jury selection dates. It's not for the jury trial itself, the trial will be in the Justice Center. There's also potential that they won't need all of those dates. It depends, they might not, like 14th and 15th, if they get the jury seated and the 14th, they're going to need the 15th, et cetera. What that does, it doesn't mean anything in terms of our cost for running, since it's totally waived, but we would potentially, that would save some staff time. And Assistant Auditor, Lisa Markley?
I just want to note that November 3rd is the election and we typically use Gates Hall FYI.
We do.
Thank you. I'm thrilled.
I didn't know we used Gates Hall. Thanks for bringing that up.
And I'm not, I don't think Yonder has made the final decision as to what locations are going to be used for this election. I don't think that has played out yet completely.
However, I just want to note that that is one of our voting locations.
Okay.
Now, only the south room typically.
Okay, and the jury selection would be in the main area.
Okay, then we should be okay.
So I'll check with the auditor to see if she thinks that both could go on at the same time. Good, that's good. So now, it would be additional setup then and some additional crowd control, yes. But it wouldn't preclude us using it on the 3rd for both purposes. Thank you.
Like I said, the south rooms will be typically have.
Yeah, and that makes sense. And I don't think they'll be using it, but if we approve this, I told Scott Hand, I would get hold of him to see who locally our folks should coordinate with. So I would entertain a motion that we enter into an arrangement to use Gates Hall for jury selection in the dates September through December of this year.
Still moved, second.
Further discussion?
I just want to thank the city of Nevada. They have been very cooperative and very accommodating and also made it very affordable for us at previous locations while I've been sitting on the board. And so it's nice of them to extend out to this to include the courts into this. I know we're paying people or it's not paying in this case, but thank you to the city of Nevada again in partnership.
And I also want to thank the courts for understanding the issue in terms of money. They thought that the insider try and work somewhat better, that they were willing to go with either and they certainly understood, you know, because we're saying we understand it, it is our responsibility to provide it, but that we had an option that was better for the taxpayers, so. Have we voted?
No.
No. Who made the motion?
I did.
Olson?
Aye.
Edens?
Aye.
Merkin, aye. Okay, I'll get back with Scott, then I'll talk with the auditor and I'll get back with the court administrator and make a plan. Next would be discussion and consideration to set a date in place for the public hearings for the proposed septic ordinance.
Speaking of Gates Hall, yeah. I guess, you know, I've been the advocate here for this, that this ordinance is going to impact every person living in the unincorporated areas. And that's about 4,500 if you go by our 2010 census, okay? And we're sure it's more than that. And Zoom has its place and effect and maybe we need to zoom it also, but I feel this one, we need to seriously look at giving people an opportunity to go ahead and be able to provide input in person. And as it is, I think Gates Hall holds about, the main room holds about 300, we would only be able to do 100, right? Figuring with the social distancing, et cetera, which is why we still maybe look at some kind of streaming. There are options, I think I sent down an email last week saying, let's be creative here. So I still feel that that's the way that we give people who will have their lives impacted for a very long time, and a significant number of people, an opportunity to live with.
Yes, I know from the Board of Health, there were a number of people who had commented on that ordinance and I know talking with other individuals in the county, when it was like, they were very glad it was delayed, having the public hearing because of COVID-19 and the situation, I know that they want to make sure that they're able to have constructive input. And how we do that, whether we can do, I don't know the volume of people that we will have. You know, you could have 20 or 30 people, you could have 130 people. I don't know how many are going to want to participate in this, but I do know it will be a large issue.
And the Board of Health fed on it and then was that a conference call, meeting, or is that in person?
I think it's kind of in person, before we.
Before COVID.
Yeah.
Okay. And the reason I put this on the agenda, and I certainly don't disagree that internet access is difficult in rural areas, you know, we did get some, we did get on our drainage district meeting last night, lots of people who did Zoom in and didn't seem to have a problem with it. Of course, we haven't heard from people who didn't and why. But my concern why I put this on the agenda is as the emails started flowing around on this, it seemed like lots of problems and concerns were being brought up from staff about how do we do this, how do we do that? And it ended up sounding like it can be a very complicated and very time-intensive thing to put together for staff. And I wanted to have a discussion at this table about it before and for the supervisors to be going in one direction, before we started investing a lot of staff time in an alternative. We should know if that's, if we're serious about it. I was concerned about the technical aspects that our IT director brought up. I am concerned about mandating and monitoring social distancing in a meeting and just all the things that were brought up in the emails, and I didn't print them off or get them collated. So I just know that there's a lot of things that we better, we better not just do say, oh, just everybody go do what you need to do. I think it's got to be a coordinated effort and somebody's got to be in charge of it if we're going to do this and we have to realize that it's going to take a lot of time.
Well, I do because we had the CAFO one, which, you know, I worked with staff on that and Alyssa did a lot. So my comments and response, first of all, we all exist to serve the public and sometimes that's easier than other times. And so I'm holding very clearly here to there's complicated, there's impossible. And I've not heard anybody say impossible, okay? And I want to make that clear. We did in the CAFO situation have a couple of things, it would be nice to see better and I think I sent out an email noting that maybe we just allocate, and it would be roughly $500,000 to hire somebody who has a sound system to come in to address the issue there. Another option I looked at, considered, is maybe we do the owl here and the listening part with some staff offering the microphone to people, is they gather at Gates Hall and then it's, so it's a back and forth. I'm just seeing options. We've got, I so feel strongly, we've got to be creative. There's complicated and then there's impossible. Now, I don't think there's an impossible here, okay?
We also have to deal with disasters right now. You know, we're still.
And we put this off.
I guess, yeah, my question is, is this an urgent topic that needs to be addressed right away? We are dealing with a couple disasters, you know, a natural disaster, an epidemic.
So, and I like, yeah, I believe is not the deadline we're under that Margaret retires at the end of the year?
No, she doesn't. She's going to work into next year and I don't know how long.
Oh, okay, so that, all right, that has been when I told you.
She told you.
She has, she has no setting.
Okay, thank you.
The only comment I want to make is, understand October 14th is right in the middle of pardon season too.
Right, which was one of my concerns, yeah, about who's available.
So, yeah, where you'd want to then probably push it into at least November, if you want to have people that are impacted or after the first of the year.
Right.
Because of that.
Right.
Yeah. Because I do remember going to a Farm Bureau meeting and that was a comment that was brought up of, will you have it accessible and will you have it at a time that is accessible?
Right.
So I just think there's a lot of things we need to consider. And we've been definitely prone to for loop with this pandemic and what we can provide or can't provide. And maybe it ends up being only Zoom that we're doing. I would love the opportunity to explore a little bit more just because of the conversations that I've had with people who I know are very interested and want to have their, have their say.
Alyssa, two people who would be involved in this would probably be people who report to you, Joby and Barra.
Sure.
So would you be willing to get with them and say we're probably, what I'm hearing is we may want to wait, go into November rather than October. That might be good because we get after the election. We still need, we need to look at the dates that Gates would be used for jury selection and stay away from those dates. That would put one more day on Facilities Management for having to get Gates ready for a meeting. We have to realize that. But could the three of you get together and maybe get Margaret involved too and see if you can come up with a plan that you think is workable for Gates and bring it back to the supervisors before we say, that's what you got to do, let's see how feasible it is?
And I think I would also say, I don't know that we necessarily have to be tied to November because we don't know, not only jury selection, but we also don't know what Gates Hall might have going on in there.
The one thing, and I'm sure Linda remembers this from last, from 2019 with the CAFO thing, is you push it too far and you can end up with ice storms.
Well, right.
And more ice storms.
Right. And you run into the holidays.
We were in January, February for the, for that hearing. If we go early November, I think, and get plenty ahead of Thanksgiving, that might be a better, you know, someone had Thanksgiving, that might be a better date for farmers and give you time to come up with a good plan. So probably would be good to have a plan in a few weeks if that's workable. Let me put that back. Is that, is that what I've summarized then?
Yes.
Okay, that'll, that'll give us a little more information to make the final decision. I appreciate that. Okay, so next, we have discussion and consideration of Resolution 2116, establishing special disposal procedures for yard waste during a natural disaster, lease, right of entry and whole harmless agreements also for this vegetative degree management site. Jerry, Amelia Shumman has done a lot of work on this along with some other staff. I know Sandra's been involved, Darren Nolan and Mike Cox, but I think Jerry, you're going to present this today?
Yes, good morning, Board. This is Jerry, Planning and Development. Amelia is also on the phone, on the call. At the last Board of Supervisors meeting on the 18th, we had a request to provide a brief background on the process and so I'm going to just give a brief. And so I'm going to just give a brief update before Amelia goes through the items that are before the Board to take action on this morning. So at the August 18th meeting, the Board of Supervisors approved the Milford Township site for allowing the general public to bring their debris in. We're talking about vegetative debris only. This site is located at 600th Avenue and 160th Street. It's on the southeast corner of that intersection. The Engineering Secondary Roads Department and the Story County Conservation Department are also interested in using the site to process material from the road right-of-way and from the county parks. Since the October, or excuse me, August 18 meeting, our department has been working pretty closely with several county staff. We greatly appreciate the input that we've received. We're getting very, very close. We're working on details. In fact, we have a meeting scheduled this afternoon that Sandra has organized. We did do a reach out to the Roland Fire Department Fire Chief, and they are very interested in working with the county on doing burning of all of the material, and they're on standby, waiting to hear from us. Based on a meeting that we had internally, there was some input provided about Engineering Secondary Roads Conservation Department, that there may be some interest in assisting with this project. And so we have a signup sheet that we put on the S drive. Our department will be assisting. So we want to see, you know, how many county staff are available and interested in helping with this processing. We are working on a plan to accommodate collection, receiving, processing during the week as well as Saturday. And as I said, we're working on some details for the operation of the site this afternoon. We've received communication with Todd. He's reached out with our insurance company, NAP Tedesco. They've collected information about this project, and they're also communicating or reaching out to ICAP. I see Todd's on the call, and I'll let him fill in and provide any additional information there. But the items that are before you are a resolution, a right of entry, and a hold harmless agreement in addition to a lease agreement and a site plan. The county attorney's office has reviewed the first three documents. The site plan has been reviewed by Todd, Darren, Mike, and Brian Sampson, the tenant And as I mentioned, Sandra has been involved throughout this process and also assisting with the internal coordination and helping us to stay on track and on point. So before we go into, you know, a brief analysis of the components of each of these documents, do you have any questions for either myself or Amelia?
Any general questions, or should Jerry proceed?
I have questions. Do you have questions? Okay. So Jerry, you said the Roland Fire Department is interested in doing the work of the burning. So what kind of fee or compensation are they looking at?
My understanding is there would be no fee. The chief indicated that they're always interested in working with, you know, local governments and other individuals in, you know, helping their crew with training efforts. So I think they're looking at it as a training opportunity.
What they usually do with going to the fire department, I know when the landowners sometimes heaven burns, they burn a prairie or something, they may give a contribution to the association. I don't know if the government can do that.
Okay. And the other reason I asked is that we could be looking at a large amount of materials requiring their volunteer, their department, put in a lot of volunteer hours. So I'm just, I'm just making sure that we understand reasonably what we'd be asking volunteers to do, or if, yeah, we would pay the cost. So then, just to clarify, that you've got the signup sheet on the S drive for county staff, and you say, helping with the processing. What is the processing part of it?
Well, the first thing is monitoring what comes in. So we're going to keep track of, you know, taking photos of all of the loads that come in. We want to make sure that we're receiving only vegetative materials, so material from trees, shrubs, vegetative matter. We're going to check IDs so that we're getting information, you know, material from the unincorporated area of the county. And, you know, also taking photos. Part of what we're going through is, you know, making decisions about whether or not, you know, we're going to be requesting FEMA reimbursement. I know Darren is preparing for FEMA reimbursement. If we do decide to go that route, we'll have this documentation, which will be very helpful for that.
So you're asking for city staff to sign up.
County.
County staff, I'm sorry, county staff to sign up. But is that going to be during their normal working hours? And how does that work? I mean, are we, or are people, or is it going to be at night? And we may be paying people overtime? I mean, I've got, and I think these are, Alyssa needs to address this, because if you're pulling somebody off of one job to do another job, how might we be hindering regular function?
Right. Yeah, I agree, these are details that have to be worked out. But I think we're thinking of accepting debris from the general public Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, from like noon to four, and then having a time slot on Saturday from eight to 12. But you're correct, these are details that need to be worked out with the department director, with HR.
I think it's a huge detail, because we were looking before at a price quote around $200,000. I've been contacted, and I don't know if my fellow supervisors have been contacted, but I've been contacted by Boone County, and Boone reached out, or this particular supervisor of Boone, reached out to a couple of other county supervisors in other counties about what are you guys going to do about your rubbish, your debris in the unincorporated areas? And so I just want you to know that, you know, there are other counties out there considering about are they going to have to hire or not, or how are they going to restrict the public? And so as I've been having these little, you know, email conversations, it's back to, what are we asking our employees to do? And especially, how are we paying them, and overtime involved, et cetera? Otherwise, one of the questions, and I was saying, are you going to use independent contractors? Are you going to go outside of county staff to meet your need?
I think that what we're looking at here right now, because we're not talking about picking up, what we are talking about is a drop-off. The biggest, and I don't, I can't remember, seen before, but most of those quotes involve picking up and trucking. We're not doing that. We're not doing that. The biggest I see that we could have, leases $9,000, that's for a full year. Other than that, there might be some, you know, some of it done during regular hours, some of it might require overtime, but I think department heads are going to have to figure that out, and to track the overtime that's related to this specific project. Where we might run into some larger costs, or if we cannot, and with the drought, the way it is right now, you know, there's a possibility we can't burn. My understanding is that then, you know, if we hire somebody to come in and grind this, we're probably going to have to remove it. There are places where it's possible to dispose of some much, and Keith Morgan has given us some of those. There's a lot of detail, but here's my, my thought on this. These are all good questions for us. The reality is, if this is going to be a useful site, and if it's going to help us keep stuff out of the right-of-way, which is going to be a big ask, if people keep piling stuff in the right-of-way, and we're going to have to take it out anyway, we need to get a site up quickly. And I think we just need to let the staff deal with these issues.
I agree. I'm just concerned about that we, that in using our staff, they need, I mean, we really need to say, what other services are we offering that are going to suck?
Well, and I think two in our, I'm sorry, are you done?
No.
Yes, I was. I think two in our discussions last week, when we approved the $9,000 for it, is we told it, we wanted the department heads to look at what available staff, what staff might have some available time, along with their other duties, that they might have some time to help monitor this. I don't think the expectation was, at least my take was, that it was going to be totally taking them away from their total duties to do it. Where else might they have a little bit more, I guess it's a downtime, or there aren't the, the, or something can be, can be done the next day, where they can put some time in. That was my initial, not saying that was the end-all, moving forward, you know, in perpetuity ways, but at least a start-up to get it going. But I think your comments are very valid, that we certainly need to be aware of and look at, because that probably cannot be the way to long-term.
And Mike Cox volunteered, was thinking exactly that. He volunteered himself and three other staff, two of them are PRM staff, and they're headed on some things right now, and said they could, he could, they could do this for a while. Now, secondary roads is going to be a different thing, because they're out cutting up, they're cutting up a tree half mile south of me today on Carver, and a pretty huge one. And they've got a lot of stuff that's fallen into the right-of-way that they're having to get. So if there's going to be overtime, that's probably where it would come. You know, I think we have to go into this trying to get it so we can, we can get all the documentation we need so we can apply for FEMA. But FEMA is on down the road, and sometimes it takes years. So I, I just would encourage staff to use existing resources when you can, keep the cost down as much as you can, but also, I mean, if we've got to do it, we've got to do it, and then we see what FEMA, you know, make sure that we're, we're covering the bases for FEMA. But it's, I just see the right-of-ways with a lot of stuff right now, and I see a whole lot. We're still getting calls. We've gotten several calls, we're still getting calls. So I think if we're not hauling and hauling, if we're not hauling, we just do a drop-off site, I think we can limit our costs, and I think we can help ourselves and help the residents.
Sure. Just, I just, I like what Lisa said about temporarily, and that meeting this afternoon seems to find temporarily, because if our staff has that much extra time, you know, and it's going to be weeks and weeks, which I think it may be for, you know, secondary roads, if everything cleaned out, then if people are dumping stuff also, or whatever, I think the discussion this afternoon needs to be realistic about time. And then, seriously, if our staff, if we brought extra staff, just begin Monday, Monday, Tuesday, or Monday through Wednesday, take the afternoon off, and then work on a Saturday instead to make it up, and we still have, and we're still able to do this and deliver all our services, either we've got super staff, which we know, we've got good staff, okay, or we're overstaffed. I mean, you know, that's why I'm, that's why I'm pushing here a little bit, that there's going to be a cost involved, and yes, we need to do it quickly, but this is, we're back to, at what point are we going to extend taxpayer dollars? Either with our own staff, or when we say, hey, we got to call somebody in, because we can't provide our regular services anymore. We're pushing off our regular jobs. And if we aren't, then you guys on the budget next year have something to look at.
I don't think people are sitting around twiddling their thumbs and saying, oh, no, I don't have any work to do. I think they're understanding this is a disaster and are prioritizing. That's the way I would look at this. If they're saying, we can let something else go, because we've got a disaster going on.
And, yeah, but for how many weeks before the public, the expectation is served, delivered? The regular.
This is Jerry, can I add something to the last staff? I think our view or our vision is that there would be one person monitoring all the loads, and then likely, like two, two, maybe three county staff operating the equipment, like the front-end loaders, you know, moving, processing the material to be burned. So we're talking about maybe two or three people per shift, per day.
Okay, thank you. So that's helpful about the operating the equipment, because that wasn't in the list here. The monitoring was, you know, but, so that, that, so then not everybody can even volunteer. It needs to be someone that knows how to do that.
Yeah, we, sorry. We just wanted to put that list out there, or that signup sheet, to see who's available, who's interested, and then go from there, you know? And maybe we need to do a reach out to volunteers, but we wanted to, you know, check internally first, based on the discussion from the last board meeting.
Please clarify, and then reach out to volunteers, but want to start internally first. Are you saying that you might be looking at the option of?
I guess I'm responding, I'm responding maybe to emails I received about potentially reaching out to volunteers. And I think we're at a stage of, you know, based on discussions from the last board meeting, we were to use, as you stated, you know, look internally to see what resources, what staff's available to assist with this project first. And so we just put that out there yesterday. So we'll continue to monitor that. Again, our thought is that we'd have operations Monday through Wednesday from noon to four, and then have a day open on Saturday, which we think will be very beneficial to the general public from eight to noon.
And King has something to add.
Yes, we did receive an email from Keith about whether or not we need volunteers. However, he wants feedback by 5:00 PM tomorrow, and we are not at that point yet where we can determine that, you know, if we're basing it on whether or not staff have availability, some availability to do this, so that we can learn from the experience. Because from talking to everybody, it sounds like this hasn't happened before, we haven't done this before, we haven't provided the service before. So we're kind of learning as we go.
So my question is back to the people running the equipment, and our insurance liability, our ability to even use volunteers to operate something like, I'm just going to say, a bulldozer. I have no idea if that's the right use of a.
They would actually be gatekeeper, monitor, site manager type of a person, you know, checking to make sure that the people are bringing the right stuff, they're from the county, and so forth, but not operating the equipment.
But not the equipment.
It would be more Darren's people and maybe Mike's staff.
We had concerns brought up before, I think, and insurance-wise about volunteers using chainsaws or operating power equipment and that kind of thing, and that would not be anything we would be talking about.
Yeah, I don't know that we had ever talked about them operating any chainsaws or anything. That's the first area, and I had heard of the chainsaws, I think.
Okay. So it sounds like maybe, maybe since you're in charge of this, Sandra, and that, maybe you want to talk to Supervisor Hartman about any conversation she's had that she's not passed on.
She's been passing stuff.
Okay. So, yeah, just because, yeah, because somebody may say, oh, I run a chainsaw all the time. Okay, thank you.
And that might have come up, but we have not made that request, saying that we need so many chains, people can run chainsaws or whatever. We've mostly been talking about running the equipment, and that was a discussion between Mike and Darren about whether or not their staff would be able to do that.
So I have a question about one of the doc, two of the documents. The first one is the site plan. Now, Jerry, did you want to walk us through each one of these documents? I mean, I don't want.
Yeah, I'm going to yield to Amelia. I'll have her go through them.
Sandra.
Good morning, Board. I'm, I'll go through just the documents briefly. If you have a specific question about the site plan, though, Supervisor Olson, I'm happy to answer that.
When you look at it, you've got the green squares saying the public on one side and the county on the other, but then you've got just in, I think the notes or sign for saying where this goes, you've got them opposite, so just match them up. It's just a comment, as you go through the final draft of the site plan, make sure you have the signs matched up with where public versus county is supposed to drop off. That's the only thing.
Sure, thank you for that. I see that mistake now.
That's it.
I guess, just a brief overview of the site plan, we're planning on having, you know, one-way traffic on the site. In the communication materials we put out about having a site, it would say, you know, enter from the east only to minimize, you know, crossover traffic. We have that load monitoring location, which would be the site monitor that we've been discussing, you know, would be a county staff person. discussing, you know, would be a county staff person available when the public drop-off is occurring to take pictures of the loads and check, you know, addresses. And then we'd have one side be a public drop-off site, and one side be a county drop-off site, so that we could keep the debris separate, so that Darren, who has separate requirements for FEMA reimbursement, can follow those. And then, in terms of the buffers, you know, we've, I discussed the buffers with Todd Lundvall, with the risk manager, and I also reached out to Ray Reynolds at the City of Nevada, who's the fire chief there, and had some experiences with stove over piles, just trying to gauge what a good buffer from the roadway is. I think for the stove over piles, which is another type of vegetative debris, there was a 100-foot buffer that applied from roadways, so we're trying to just mirror that here. So we make sure there's an adequate distance, and then I increased that for the burn piles to 150 feet as well. So there's buffers between the piles shown on the site plan and from the roadway.
This is Jerry, is there an interest in having us show the site plan on the screen right now?
Leanne's doing that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Leanne. Are there any questions on, you know, the site plan, or would like me to go over anything else on it, now that we can all see it? Okay. Just briefly on the lease document, again, we appreciate Ethan and the County Attorney's Office reviewing the resolution, lease to hold harmless and right-of-entry agreements. The lease has been signed by the property owners and Brian Sampson, who's the tenant farmer. It includes, you know, what area of the site we're going to be used, access, you know, county can use it 24, access it 24 hours a day if needed. I don't think that will be the case, though. It says only for vegetative debris, that restoration of the site will include proper disposal of the debris, and the county will attempt to scrape. There's an existing rock base under the old stove over piles that the, that Brian Sampson requested we try to remove, so that is in there. There is no interest in the county keeping that rock, so that's in the lease, that the county has no intention of hauling the rock from the site. The scraped rock will be left in piles on the site, and Mr. Sampson and I discussed that, and he is good with that provision. There is a resolution, it's 21-16, as well, for your consideration and action today. This is related to Chapter 40 of the Story County Code, which allows the board to establish special disposal procedures for yard waste due to a natural disaster. So in this order, excuse me, in this resolution, you'll see that it includes what site we'll be using, that it's only for vegetative debris, that county departments may use it, and there'll be set hours for the public use, and directing staff to communicate the public disposal hours and requirements. And then on the right-of-entry agreement, this was an example document that I received from Iowa Homeland Security. It allows right-of-entry for Story County, the State of Iowa FEMA, and our contractors, if there are any, and there's also a hold harmless portion. And again, the County Attorney reviewed this document, and the property owners and Brian Sampson did sign this. Are there any questions on the document?
Supervisor Olson has a question.
Okay, on the resolution itself, item number three, and it's an item that talks about only accepting vegetative debris, but tree stumps shall not be accepted. So I just encourage the group this afternoon to address what exactly you're going to do, or where you're going to refer people who show up with a pickup load, or whatever, or that, and tree stumps in them, as well as other types of debris. But I think tree stumps are going to be the one of the thing, it's a tree, it's cut up, so why would you take this big limb out? I'm just saying you need to address it in some fashion in your plan.
And Amelia, this is Lisa, I just have one question. How the resolution is written, it's written that it's yard waste due to the natural disaster, but we have the land for a year, or we're purchasing it for the year. How does that play in if we start doing things in April or May, but they're not specifically related to the disaster? Do you have to then do a new resolution?
I think because it wouldn't be related to the natural disaster at that point, we'd likely need to go through a conditional use permit process for other uses of the site.
Okay, okay. All right.
The resolution is kind of like an alternative to getting a conditional use permit for the site.
Okay, thank you.
Chapter 40 specifically talks about disasters.
Yeah, I know that.
So you can.
Yeah, I think so.
Amelia, do you have anything else, then? Did you want to talk about the right-of-entry?
The right-of-entry, sure. Again, if, exactly, kind of like if we owned a property and didn't have road frontage, and you need an easement, you know, this is kind of like ensuring that we can enter the site. And then the hold harmless portion, again, is something that Iowa Homeland Security recommended, to make sure that Story County, the State of Iowa, and FEMA aren't held liable for any actions, legal actions that may result from activities on the site by the property owner or the tenant farmer, if there were damages related to that work.
So any questions about either the lease or the right-of-entry? And I would say that I'm glad you said under the rock that we would attempt to scrape the existing rock, because that's been under a stove over pile for quite a bit of time. I understand it's three-inch rack, which we can't use, and also there's some kind of fabric in it, so I think attempt is a good word to have as a modifier there.
Thank you. And I did send that specific language to Ethan Anderson as well, for him to look at, and he said that looked okay.
My other question might be, will the landlord have a problem if we demolish and remove the debris as opposed to?
That's a good question. You know, the lease and the resolution all include the possibility of chipping.
I definitely.
Included in the process. Sorry, go ahead.
I think it's, if there's a drought, then we cannot burn, because the conditions won't allow it. I think that, that pretty much covered this. But probably worth a conversation, just for some verbal understanding on it. Any other questions? I want to thank the staff for some really fast work. It may not seem like it, I know the ratio was on August 10th, but as has been pointed out, this is something we haven't done before, and we realized that, and it's been, you know, getting, getting all the documents put together, talking to Homeland, talking to DNR, talking to emergency management, finding a site, and it's going to work. This is a lot, this is a lot of good work done more quickly, and I just want to commend everybody for the beginning of the work, because there'll be a lot more to this. And I think it will be very, if we approve this, I think it will be looked at very favorably by a lot of the residents, the unincorporated areas, that we're trying to do something to help them, the county hasn't done before. Anything else? I'm wondering if we approve these three documents separately, because they are separate, and I'm going to suggest that, and would entertain a motion on resolution, to approve Resolution Number 21.16.
Hold on a second.